Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Ask that you all rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mrs. Ahmed?
Here.
Dr. Alati?
Here.
Mr. Healy?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mrs. Cabrera?
Here.
Mr. Mazone?
Here.
Dr. Racine?
Here.
Mr. Rowland?
Here.
Mr. McLean? You have a quorum.
Excellent. It is nice to see so many people here tonight. I'm going to open this up with some standard language. The New Jersey Open Meetings Public Act, Open Public Meetings Act, was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Rutherford Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place posted on the bulletin board outside of the Borough Clerk's office, mailed to the Herald-South Bergenite, and the record newspapers, and filed with the Borough Clerk. Hard copies of the agenda, I'm going to go quickly now, hard copies of the agenda are available in the meeting room, and the agenda is posted electronically on the district's website at www.rutherfordschools.org. Regular meetings of the Rutherford Board of Education will be broadcast without editing during a two-hour segment as limited by Comcast time constraints. On Tuesday evenings at 8:00 PM on the Comcast Public Access Channel and on Fios Channel 38. A video of the meeting can also be viewed on our website at www.rutherfordschools.org. The video link can be found by opening the Board of Education link, clicking on Public Meetings, and then Videos. Any member of the public who wishes to view a DVD of the meeting can make that request in writing to the Board Secretary. So our first order of business tonight is to review and approve the minutes from last meeting. They were included in your packets. Does anybody have any comments or additions? Okay, so we'll enter those into the record. Okay, and next, next up is our special presentation tonight. We have Ms. Coy, who's here with our kindergarten center.
Thank you very much for having us from the kindergarten center. We have eight exciting, excited friends who are going to share with you a little bit about Writer's Workshop. Last month at the April meeting, Mr. Mulcahy and his representatives did a demo lesson at the third grade, and they also gave a brief description as to what Writer's Workshop looks at the first, second, and third grade. Well, a lot of times, the misperception is that in kindergarten, they're not writing, or they're just learning their letters in a few words. When we are actually writing to tell stories, to write information pieces, and persuasive writing as well, all part of Writer's Workshop. So we're going to do a little sampling. They have some information they want to share with you. They actually told me what we were sharing with you tonight, because I told them we were going to teach some of the parents and some of the other board members and people in our community about writing, and when I had my agenda, they quickly changed it to their agenda. So they, we have many leaders coming our way, so it's kind of self-directed, even with some "ask me this question and I'll tell you this answer." So bear with us, it's been quite a fun time for a discussion to hear it from them also. So don't mind me, I'm just going to sit with them, because I'm usually on the floor anyway, in my office or the floor, and as are the teachers. So first, the students are going to introduce themselves.
My name is Maddox. I am in Ms. Raygo's class.
My name is Jada, and I'm in Ms. Angelson's class.
My name is Bradley, and I'm in Mrs. Capria's class.
My name is Ammon, and I'm in Mrs. Zavida's class.
My name is Joe, I am in Ms. Ramos's class.
I am Sebastian, and I'm in Ms. Vega Mom's class.
My name is Alessandra, and I am in Ms. Carter's class.
My name is Adrian, and I'm in Ms. Tori's class.
Great job, friends introducing yourselves, I really appreciate it. So, boys and girls, I have a question. Are you ready? Are you ready? Okay, my question is, are you only learning letters in a few words in kindergarten? What are you learning? So they're learning to be authors and illustrators, and when they're writing, they're referred to as authors and writers, correct? All right, and they're excited, because they also draw pictures at this level. When they're doing Writer's Workshop, they use a lot of illustrations to help them get their ideas on the paper, and then they will go from labeling, and they kind of build upon that into sentences and to stories. So it's really quite amazing to see these end results here with all the information they can share. So why do we write? Jada, do you know why we write?
To make us smart.
To make, to give information to people. It, it gives us a story, and it, and it gives us information about what it means.
And a lot of times, before we write, we have to take a moment, we have to get our ideas together, correct? Correct. And I know one of the books, or a few of the books were being passed along before, sometimes there's mentor texts utilized to help, to help students get ideas, but it also helps model how to get ideas. But how do we get ideas at the kindergarten center? Can you share with us, Adrian, what you have in your folder that helps us get ideas? Can you share what this is with our friends? So what's on there?
Mario and Legos.
And Legos, what else is on there?
About my family.
About your family, very good. And why do you have that in your folder? Does that help you do? Does it help you get ideas?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you. So it helps get ideas. A lot of times, what the students will do, they'll have a paper in their folder, or they'll have their folder decorated with things they like, sports, activities, or they'll have a paper in there that talks, that has pictures of different things. A lot of times, in the beginning of writing, it's very hard to identify your ideas or to pull them together, so it's really exciting to have some, a reference readily available to them. Bradley, how else do we get ideas?
When teachers read us stories, we get to write what is our favorite part, and then we get ideas from it.
How do you, Maddox, want to share too? How else do we get ideas, or what are some other ways we get ideas for topics for writing?
From other books.
From other books, okay. And what are some books you like to read about?
Probably, probably like about like space, or anything.
Maddox, did you know if you read about space or insects, that's called nonfiction?
And that was the directive, I was told, make sure I get that question, so she could give that comment. She's all, great job, Alessandra. So, and you are correct, and so there's ideas. We do writing that's narratives, that tell stories, and we also write about telling people things we like and what we want them to do, but we also write about information pieces on all different, different topics to inform people. Joe, can you tell us some more about writing?
In kindergarten, we do all different types of writing. We write on our own. We write as a class. We learn how to write narratives, information pieces. We are learning about persuasive writing now. We are going to share our writing pieces with you all.
Can you read yours?
How to Catch a Leprechaun, by, by Joe. First, get a box. Then, get gold coins. Next, put the tape on the coins. Last, wait a month to look at him.
Very good. Can you pass it to Sebastian?
How to Play Mario, by Sebastian. Mario is going to turn in the lightning. You turn Mario in the lightning. Next, Toad is saying, "Go away." Mario, don't face Toad's face. Mario, if you want to look around, press Y on the bottom of the controller. Mario turned into Bowser, Bowser Scratch, like a cat. You are bad, Bowser.
How to Plant Seeds, by Alessandra. First, get up the pot and put soil in it. Next, put the seeds in it. Then, bring it outside before it rains. After it rains, put it in a sunny spot. Last, watch them grow.
How to Make a Peanut Butter and Jelly Sandwich. First, go to the kitchen and get two slices of bread. Next, get some peanut butter and jelly. Then, open the jelly. Spread the peanut butter and jelly. Last, enjoy eating your sandwich. Remember to clean up.
Sorry, technical difficulties. You don't want the mic? Okay, you could just read. Will you show them all your picture, Ammon? Can you show everyone up there? What a great job. People at the treehouse.
Your house is colorful, I like it.
Bradley, you can use the microphone right next to you. You don't want to. Bradley, grab the mic. Grab the mic. You want me to help you?
Our class bed should be a turtle. The class bed should be a turtle, because it is hard, and we can throw at him sand, so we can cover him and find him, and he can carry us to the playground, and we can play with him.
That'll be my next request, where turtle provides playgrounds.
Summer is the best season. I like summer, because I could play outside, and I could get ice cream. Also, I could go swimming. I can't wait for summer.
So a lot of times, we also encourage children to be creative with their writing, and we have a little man here who wants to be an author when he grows up, so is often writing in the classroom, and he's going to share one of, the beginning of one of his stories, that you have to wait till he's published to hear the rest.
The piece of bread who went to see the world. Once upon a time, there was a piece of bread. That piece of bread climbed to the door. "I'm free," said the bread. "I'm free."
So the bread is free. But so this is just a sampling of our writing, and we really do a lot of different types of writing. They do it every day in all different forms, and it's not just in the Language Arts Program. They're writing to talk about their math, they're writing in science, they're writing to talk about our communities, so they're writing all the time. And we really are just focusing right now to have writing, to instill that writing has a purpose, and that it's purposeful and meaningful, to help them understand that it's purposeful and meaningful going forward as well. And they've really done a great job. With that, they realized that they were special guests, and they were very excited, so they wanted to write thank you notes, so that everyone's going to get a thank you note from the students today. But I think you guys did a great job, and I'm really proud of you today, and I know your teachers are.
I'd like to, I'd like to take the opportunity also to acknowledge and thank Mr. Vega Mom, Mr. Tori, and Mrs. Capria, who are here tonight with their students, and thank them for embracing this new program and really sharing with the students, and thank you.
Great job. You're wonderful.
Yeah. And we'd also really like to thank all of our presenters tonight. As they're giving out thank you cards.
Thank you so much. They're beautiful colors, too.
Do you remember me?
Wow, look at this. Hi, Jada. Thank you. Wow, look at this. How wonderful.
Good job, Arith.
To, to all of our presenters tonight, boys and girls, we thank you for coming here tonight. We talk a lot about programs at these meetings, but when you come and see us and bring your work and show us your work, we get to see what it's all about. So thank you. It takes a lot of courage to come up and read your work in front of a lot of different adults and in front of the camera, and we thank you and congratulate you tonight. So, so to the, to the parents who are here, and the supporters who are here for the kindergarten presenters, we're going to move on with the meeting. You are certainly welcome to stay, but if you would like to excuse yourself, we certainly understand.
Good job.
Nice work, guys.
Very much, I enjoyed it.
Thank you very much, they were great.
Everyone who's left in the audience is sitting very far away. Okay, so the next item on our agenda tonight is the report of the student representative. Mr. Daniel Sullivan?
So as AP tests are coming to a close, the end of the school year is coming to a close, so we are now entering our final benchmarks of the year, and seniors will be off in college, and great stuff. Looking at our sports, there's no outstanding, unfortunately, there's no outstanding records for any RHS sports team, but our win-to-loss ratio is still pretty high, so we still have hopes for future seasons and the rest of the year. Now, looking at the rest of the month, we have the National Honor Society induction, which is 16th, that's the Wednesday, from 7 to 8. Evening of the Arts will follow that the following night from 7 to 9. Evening of the Arts, that's music, the art classes, and STEM classes. June 1st, from 8 to 11 in the morning, will be the senior breakfast, where awards and scholarships are awarded to all the seniors. And on that note, that night will be the Rutherford High School Senior Prom. That's going to be from 6 to 11. And then wrapping up the year is graduation on the 21st, where we say bye to all the seniors. And that's from 6:30 to 9. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, any comments or questions on the students' report?
You're a senior this year, are you not? And are you going to the prom?
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Lot of pressure, huh?
I know, it's boss. Okay, thank you. So next, we're going to move on to our report of superintendent. Mr. Hurley?
Thank you. I understand our band went down to Washington, right? And they, and they did very, very well.
They did. I think they got, they got the highest.
Highest ranking, yeah, yeah, the highest ranking of bands from around the East Coast. And so that was very nice, and as I mentioned, and I think we put the video up on the website for Union School on the robotics team, if you get, anybody who's listening or watching, if you get a chance, it's a three-minute video, that's a highlight of the competition out in Kentucky. And the Union School Robotics Team, I, let me just make sure I got these numbers correct, they placed 45th out of 400 schools who were at the competition from around, not only the country, but around different parts of the world. And then there was also an online competition in which they placed 72 out of 2,000 countries, schools from around the world that participated. So that's quite an accomplishment for the robotics students in our middle school, who won on the state level, went out to this international competition of VEX Robotics in Kentucky, and that was about a week or two ago they did that, so we want to congratulate them. A couple of things that I'm going to do a little differently in my report, you know, we've, we've been talking obviously about facilities for months, pretty much the better part of this year, and I know the board heard from Mr. Morano once or twice, and Mr. Schweitzer once, and Mrs. Carrion as well, and those are the buildings where, if the facility plans go through, the bulk of the, of the work will be. But a lot of the project, proposed project centers on physical education, health, and also interest classic athletics. So Mr. Frazier happened to be in the building, as he is many nights in his job as athletic director, tonight for a end-of-the-season league meeting. So I asked him if he could stop in and take part in my presentation, to just talk to the board and to the public about the impact on physical education and health and interest classic sports. So, yeah, otherwise we won't hear you on TV, and your whole second career is gone. I just want to, Mr. Frazier's not often here at these board meetings, he's here at the field, and the gyms, and all over the place, but I just wanted to let the board know that Mr. Frazier is the former president of the State Interest Classic Athletic Association Executive Committee, and in that role, he chairs many, many committees, and I'm fortunate enough to be on the executive committee. And last week, Mr. Frazier had to come down because we're in nine constitu-, nine, I believe? Well, we'll say nine, right? Nine constitutional rule change that will be voted on by the entire state in December being proposed, and David had to present to the group, and this is not a board of like nine, this is a board of about 60 or 65, and Mr. Frazier had to walk you through, explain, not all these were his proposals, but he had to answer questions, and as always, made us all very proud of him. So in his role here and in the state, we're very fortunate to have an athletic director who is one of the leaders in the state in athletics, so now you have to live up to that introduction now that.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, to our Board of Education, Mr. Hurley, our superintendent, Mr. Kelly, our business administrator, to the members of our community. I just wanted to share a few moments with you regarding the facility update and the impact on health and physical education, and I can tell you that it is in fact a positive one. New facilities, especially with the growing rate, the number of students in each grade, the town is a wonderful place to live and raise children, and we can see that by the number of folks who continue to move in, bring with them, wherever they came from, a nice addition to our community of Rutherford that builds the diversity, but the numbers are in fact growing. So class sizes, to a benefit, are going to continue to grow, to a detriment is losing space. And in the health and physical education realm, the gymnasiums that will be replaced, hopefully by the new facilities, are going to benefit our children for years to come. You know, if you have a car, you have a home, you buy a starter size, your family grows, you can still drive the car, but eventually you have to get a minivan. This is kind of one of those analogies where, you know, we have older buildings and older classrooms, and, you know, we're moving past the car to the minivan. For health and physical education, they are safe environments in which our children are participating in. But as the numbers grow, not that it becomes unsafe, it just becomes more safe to expand the classroom. For instance, if I were to take this group of 20-something and say you're quarantined to this corner of the room, and let's do a particular activity, we can in fact do it, and I could be creative and do lots of things to help you accomplish a specific task, but if I said, you know what, we can spread out in this whole auditorium, and what will happen? You'll have more space to do things, we'll have more opportunities to do different things, and again, the chances of your health and fitness levels increasing by having more space to move in more space is a benefit. So in our gymnasiums, when we're talking about health and physical education, having an appropriate-sized gymnasium at Union School for kids that are now much larger, I can't imagine that gym being much bigger than this room, so now, expanding to a much bigger facility is a win-win, not only for health and phys ed, but also members of the community, members of our athletic program that will utilize that particular gymnasium. Over across town in Pierpont, a very similar issue. Recently observed a classroom, a class activity, it was fantastic, teachers were co-teaching, but the first thing I noticed was how much better this activity would have been for the children had the room been larger. And again, teachers were doing a great job, students were actively participating, unit was safe, the whole activity could be enhanced with more space. Same thing goes with community members being allowed to use those facilities, athletic teams being allowed to use those facilities. It will only enhance what the community's able to do in those particular facilities, as well as our athletic teams. Our field behind the high school, I'm not going to guess the year, but the last time we had the additions here, you know, the staging area was in the back, and although grass is down there now, it never bounced back to the way it was originally. And right now, again, with an added bonus of having a turf field, it becomes a safer environment, it becomes an all-weather environment for not only our physical education classes, not only for our athletic teams, but for members of our community. This spring is kind of an anomaly, but I'll use it anyway. The weather was absolutely terrible, it was freezing, it rained most of the time, and where our practice is held, down at Memorial Field, whereas if that facility was better usable for athletic teams, to be able to stay in our building, use our weight room, chalk-talk in the classroom, shuffle teams outside on a surface that's pretty much all-weather, again enhances our ability athletically, but also during the day from 8 to 3, phys ed classes, again where we would normally split up activities, because the month of March and April were so bad, we were doing a lot of combined activities in our gymnasium and our 100 Gym, which is appropriately sized, but how much better is it when we're able to split, have some inside, some outside, for a much greater time of the school year? So in my mind, you know, it is absolutely a win-win-win, and maybe I'll throw one more in, for our students, for the members of our community, for athletic teams, and for anybody who uses those facilities, you'll notice immediately how much of a benefit it's going to become. You know, it's going to be the choice of the public to vote on it October 2nd, give or take, if that so, if that so happens, and I hope that, you know, you'll think about those things before you go into the box. I won't shy away from it, Mr. Hurley, you can. I won't shy away from it, and Mr. Hurley, you can throw something at me if I say something wrong here. I know the pool has been a bone of contention for some people in the community, and, again, because we're a democracy, everybody has their right to voice that opinion, so so be it. I'll voice my opinion for our students. It's not a community pool, that doesn't mean our community members don't use it and enjoy it, but it's, in fact, a high school pool. And yes, our team will have to sacrifice, and we're not going to lose our team. I've been in talks with some other facilities already, because if it does, in fact, happen, I don't want to wait until it happens to start getting information. So preliminarily, I have reached out to some of my colleagues who have pools. Lynn Hurst has gotten back to us, and they have seemed very receptive, and they are one of our closest friendly rivals to us being able to work with them and getting some prime-time swimming time in their water. To the members of the community, they have said, you know, if the pool does follow the course and does close, they'd be willing to extend an olive branch to the residents of our town, to extend their programs to our community members as well. So I understand it's not right down the block, that's, I guess, two or so miles away, the new facility is one point-something miles away for the YMCA. So there are some options. Our swim team is going to face some new challenges, if that does happen, but, you know, rest assured, we'll be doing everything. I don't anticipate our program folding because of it. For me, it's, you know, I have more work to do because of it. If the facility changes, I believe probably my office may get gobbled up. So I probably have the best voice to say, nah, don't go that big in. But that would be selfish. You know, I'll be able to move, I'll find a new office, I'll be able to work with the teams to get us places. But, you know, for the 800 students in our school, the percentage of students that are going to benefit by a smaller percentage of our kids that suffers, not the word, that are going to have to adjust, is, you know, it's a win in terms of if that were to happen. So I think I've mentally covered all my points, and I hope I stated it clearly. You know, again, the choice is going to be the members of the public, but I just wanted to give you a perspective from the athletic director and the phys ed supervisor, who's going to be utilizing these facilities potentially, or having to adjust, or, you know, accommodate for our students in order to make this the best possible situation moving forward.
Thank you.
And last but not least, he almost forgot something. As a student athlete, he's, Dan Sullivan and Deese are going to be recognized, Rutherford High School representatives, as the, our conference, North Jersey Interscholastic Conference Scholar Athletes. They'll be recognized at the back end of May at the Chart House. So, again, some things have happened athletically, and he may be too shy to say it. So I'm going on record to say he's one of our recipients.
I don't know, I don't want to put you on the spot, Dave. Does any board member have a question for Mr. Frazier while he's here? Anybody?
First of all, thank you for the presentation. It was very informative and helpful. So I know we've received a number of emails from community members, and specifically about the pool, but also about field space. And one of the things that was recently talked about in a strategic planning and communication meeting, or one question that a board member had, was really about the kitchen. So this is, just bear with me for a second, I'll get there. And so, in a lot of the alternative plans and things that were proposed, there wasn't another viable Rutherford school besides the high school in which to house the kitchen. And at the past meeting, Mr. Hurley, Mr. Kelly talked about the benefit of having a kitchen. Our understanding is, is that in order to keep the pool built, you know, a two-story building, you would then need to have a kitchen. The kitchen would require approximately 15% to 20% impact to the field. And so my question for you would be, what do you see, if there is a 15% to 20% impact on the field, what does that do to sports as you see it?
Thank you. So, right now, when you're leaving, if you have a chance to look at where the backfield is, towards where the, where the pool is currently, moving out onto the field for about a 20% increase makes it a much less usable facility for any athletic events, any games, and for physical education, now we're going to have a structure, rather than being offset, you know, behind where it is now, will now extend onto the field. So we will, losing that space by even, you know, 10% or 15% would be, would not be ideal, at least if you're going to have that facility turfed. So I believe I answered your question. You know, again, extending the building out, taking, moving into the space into the field is, in my opinion, for health phys ed and for athletics, in fact, they're not, not ideal by any means.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
I also, Dr. Aladi mentioned the Strategic Planning and Communications Committee. And Dr. Racine is the chair of that committee. And normally, as if you've been coming to meetings or watching meetings, you know that what we do is when we get to the section on personnel, the personnel chair reports on any meetings we may have had, and then, you know, would read through the motions. We don't have a section in the agenda for long-term strategic planning and communication. So I'm going to let Dr. Racine give a summary of the meeting from Monday night. Oh, if you want it. It's up to you.
We're not kicking you out, but you're certainly welcome to go. You know you have homework to do.
Do you arrange all your teachers to make sure there's always a test on Tuesday? Because you always, because every Monday night, you always have a test you have to go study for. I think I have a test I have to go study for, too. But, and when I say summary, the meeting started at 7:15 and ended at about 10 minutes to 11:00. So it will be a summary. Dr. Racine, right?
Not a word-for-word, three hours, between a half hour. So we did meet on Monday for well over three hours, a lot discussed. Going to just summarize some of the, what's important? What?
Just move the mic close to you.
Is this on?
Yeah.
Okay. Take it real close.
You gotta talk right into it.
I don't have my usual one. Right. Okay. So I'm going to sum up just some of the important points, which went through. One was about our estimates, that's why estimate went up, once we got Epic involved. And just, I summarize that, that we bring on a new estimate, which is Epic, right? Our total estimate will never go down, because Epic, being a project manager, takes the maximum of every line item. So it wasn't so much as the estimate went up, as that they would be more conservative looking at every line item. Actually, Epic and PSA were under 1% difference for both their estimates. But you look at line items maxed at each, that's where the, the over 3% increase came from. It wasn't really an increase, so to speak. And what happens is, when we bond for a total amount, right, anything we do not use goes back to the taxpayers. So that's why Epic's being conservative, taking the max of each line.
Can I just add one thing? Just so everybody understands that, because this is a very important point. When Epic came in, they have a estimator, they have a team of architects, engineers, they looked at the plans, they looked at the buildings, and they came up with an estimate of the job. And if you, to Dr. Racine's point, they were about 1% within each, each other. But rather than taking the lowest estimate, or the midpoint of the two estimates, the thing is, you go with the higher estimate. And the reason you do that is because if you go out to a bond, and you go out to referendum, and the referendum is, as Dr. Racine said, is passed, you then have that amount of money and only that amount of money to use. If you come in with bids that are lower, the money immediately goes back to the issue of paying off the bond to tax relief. But if you come in with bids that are over, then the board has to make a decision about what parts of the project will not get done. So one of the concerns, which is standard fare in any sort of a referendum or a public bidding process, is if you set the referendum too low, the project that you're planning to get done, that you're hoping to get done, that you're selling is going to get done, will not get done, because we're going to be looking at bids coming in six months out, seven months out, dependent on things like oil embargoes and steel tariffs, and, you know, bad weather that, down south, let's say, that requires construction materials. You know, prices could be higher or lower. So the taxpayer would only get either the full benefit of the whole project being done, or get the return of money if the bids come in low. So that was the reason why some of the bids, the second set is higher, because if PSA was higher, went with PSA. If Epic was higher, went with Epic.
On a line-by-line basis, so it's... The second point was our state aid numbers came in. And just to remind everybody, the, right, the aid the state gives us, it's not just principal, it's principal and interest over life of a bond. So we can take, right, the budgeted numbers and use, use your portion as our, that number going forward for taxpayers. So I got to say, Mr. Kelly, I'm upset you came in only nine basis points difference between the state. So, and so rounding off, Mr. Kelly had it, had the state giving us 23.2% of aid, and rounding off, the state gave us 23.2% of aid. So that brings the total burden to the taxpayers of $40,700,000 and change. So that's what, from 53, on to 40 million, about 41 million. And so what we're proving tonight is a little convoluted, being a state, is, so we have to accept the state's numbers, which are an approval of our numbers. Basically, we're not fighting any of it, because they said we're all correct. And then after we approve the state's numbers, then the state will come back with the final numbers, which are equal to the current numbers, right? And, right, so we have tonight, and our next meeting on the 4th, to discuss all these numbers. Then we're on schedule to have a final vote on the 25th of June. So that's our process, that's our calendar going forward. Okay? There were some of the questions, too.
Yeah, just for clarity, on the agenda tonight is not approval of plans, it's approval of the state's review and approval of plans. If that makes sense. So the board is not committing to putting any or all of the plans forward. They are saying that we've reviewed the plans that the state reviewed, and we accept their findings that, A, they all had educational adequacy, and that the tax relief, as indicated by their review, is, are the numbers that Dr. Racine said. So the real cost, even though, let's assume for a moment, okay, that the whole thing goes forward as is, $54 million is the bond question, but the actual taxpayer cost is the figure Dr. Racine said, $40 million.
Right. $40 million and change.
Okay? So now, that is the step, and we've been talking about these steps since back in October. That's the step now, the board now knows what the real cost will be. And if the board did not approve the acceptance of the state reports, but did not have reason to push back to the state and say, you know, we disagree, we think we should get more, right? But if we just don't approve it, in 30 days, Mr. Kelly, is that correct? In 30 days, the report becomes final anyway, because the state's saying, you know, this is what we see, this is what we're going to prove, we're the state, and we're the ones who are going to okay funding for the project. So the board's approval, again, much like we said when the planning board approved our plans, is an endorsement, and an agreement, and a statement that they agree with the state, not agree with the plans going forward, they want to agree with the state's review. And that's, that's step in the process, okay?
A little state dance back and forth, say, we agree that they agree that we agree that either numbers are...
Everybody's agreeing with each other.
Yes. Okay, finally, moving forward, on May 3rd, we had a faculty advisory committee that was with the public, the citizens committee, and Mr. Hurley and Mr. Kelly gave some updates to the committee. And then we started looking at subcommittees, right, asking people who wants to join with subcommittees, and making a calendar of PTA meetings and back-to-school nights, and to let people know what the calendar is going forward. And looking for maybe a summer meeting, depending on people's schedules, or late August meeting, that'll be the next. And that's basically it.
Okay. Thank you. To continue or finish my report, well, first, Ms. Libera, do you want to have any discussion among the board for...
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Racine? So I'll just make a comment, and I think I'll forego my, the president of the board's report tonight, because it's really in line with the comment that I wanted to share in response to the meeting summary. I know that there has been a lot of very thoughtful discussion, thoughtful, passionate, respectful discussion about all elements, or many elements, within the, within the facility's plan. And I am very thankful, I know Kevin McLean, the president of the board, who is unable to be here because he's out of the country for work, is very thankful for everybody who's been engaging in that dialogue. It's happened here at board meetings, it's happened on social media, all of the board members read every email that comes into the facility's email, email address, there's been the roundtables, there's been all of the informal social gatherings around town that we are all involved in. And so many of the discussions that we have, with so many of the discussions that I have with folks in the community, touch on a lot of the issues that we've been talking about with the facility's plan. So I think the process is very strong, and I think part of what, a big part of what's making it so strong is the level of engagement, and, again, thoughtful discourse that's coming from the entire community. So the meeting that Dr. Racine is referring to, it was, you know, a three-hour-plus meeting at the end of a very long day of work for everybody who was there. Sergio was there, Kevin McLean was there, I was there, certainly Mr. Kelly, and Mr. Hurley, and Greg were all present, and very engaged in discussion around all of the different issues that have been brought up, all of the open questions that we as board members have, that community members have brought to us. A very thorough and deliberative process. So, again, I'm very impressed with the structure of the process, one-note-on process. And Greg mentioned it, but I just want to reinforce it. So there's two upcoming meetings in June. One is June 4th, and one is June 25th. So at the June 4th meeting, we would like for the board members to share their, their position with respect to moving a referendum, moving up a potential package to referendum vote at the next meeting. We're not asking that anything be moved at that meeting, we're asking, though, that we engage as board members in discussion about where we stand with respect to that proposal. And then on the 25th, we would decide as a board whether or not we move and approve a resolution to move a package to vote in October. So those are the sort of key dates. And I mention that because I know there's folks that are here tonight, and there's also folks who are watching, to, you know, understand that timeline, and to certainly, the purpose of asking board members to share their thinking at the next meeting is, again, not to hear a decision before it's been decided, but to understand the factors that are going into the decision-making, and the things that, the things that are on the minds of the board members in advance of the actual resolution, so that there's more time for discussion over those next coming weeks.
And I could just add one or two comments. Ms. Libera was correct about the very deep and discussion, lengthy discussion, but also, and the board members who were there, what Dr. Racine had done, he asked every board member to email any questions, concerns, comments, whether it was ones that they had or ones that they... whether it was ones that they had, or ones that they heard, you know, out in the public. So that, I think we had, what, about a six-page document of questions?
That's a six-page abridged version. You guys can write, by the way.
Yeah.
A lot of words.
And we went through, and we went through the binders, and we went through all the material that we've had to try to come up with internal discussion to answer those questions. And the only thing that could change the timeframe that Ms. Libera just spelled out, would be if the final state review, final approval, is delayed for any reason. There is no anticipation of that happening, since, as Dr. Racine explained, there won't be a change in what we've sent them already. If we send them, if there's a change from the board at a subsequent meeting to say, "Hey, we're going to add something", you know, then there would be a delay, obviously. But that timeframe that she laid out is, I think, you know, pretty accurate for this stage. Okay? And I have a few other things that I'll say from my end, as we go through various parts of the agenda. And also, a couple of things at the end, just some business for the board. Okay? So I'm done with my report.
Okay.
And you're done with yours, I guess, too.
Yes, I am. Okay. Great. So the next step will be to move on to the portion of the meeting that's open to the public. And so, you know, judging from the number of folks who are here today, I'm guessing that there may be a number of speakers. So what we'll do tonight, just to make sure that everybody has a chance, is allow everyone three minutes at the microphone. So we ask that you come up, share with us your name, your address. And then after three minutes, I'll ask you to wrap it up. Okay?
My name is Declan Mullet. I live at 114 Mortimer Avenue. I want to thank you for your words, Ms. Libera. There has been positive comment back and forth, and I wanted to thank the board members. I know you guys work hard for us, and I don't want to ever leave here feeling that it's not appreciated, because it is. I have a question. My child is in the fifth grade at Pierpont, where many classrooms have 27 to 28 students. Can you expand on your plans for the 11 new classrooms at Pierpont? And can you tell us the projected class size, what the projected class size will be when the project is finished?
We would add an additional, a minimum of an additional two classrooms at every grade level. So instead of having eight sections, which there currently are, there'd be 10. And that would bring, depending on the enrollment, the class size down to 20, 19, 21 in that area. That would use six of the classrooms. The multiply disabled and autistic classes that are currently in district from pre-K to grade one, next year will be grade two, the following year will be grade three, by the time they move to Pierpont, in order to put them in a grade-appropriate building, one or two classes would be used for that. Should there not be, should they not be ready yet, or should the referendum not go forward, then we would have to perhaps put those students in union school, which, again, for age-appropriate, would not be ideal. That would use up about eight of the classes. Currently, GNT is in a small area. World Language Spanish is taught in multiple rooms, kind of on a cart. We would be using some of those classrooms for that. And then the other would be really, the other one or two would be depending on enrollment, and sizes, and electives, and things like that. Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Chris Conti. I live at 77 Daniel Ave. I'm a coach, I'm a parent, I'm a Cub Scout leader. And I just want to first and foremost say that the board here, I think you guys have done an amazing job. The amount of information that has been phenomenal from, coming from the district as well, Mr. Crowley, Mr. Hurley, awesome. Just the amount of stuff to be able to look, go online and research has been phenomenal. I 100% support the board, in whatever decision you guys and gals make. I 100% support a referendum in any form. It's about our kids, obviously. I think the education my kids have gotten has been phenomenal. As a coach and as a volunteer in Cub Scouts, I see a lot of other kids, not just my own. And it's clearly evident, now I've been here for 10 years, I get to, I've seen a lot of these kids grow older, and see them become better educated. And it's a pretty awesome thing to see. And that's 100% due to the school here. And, I mean, it's incredible. As a coach, one thing, you know, we hear a lot of things about the pool and the fields and stuff like that. You know, the field here specifically, without a doubt, 100%, is a community field. You know, obviously, we have gym class, obviously, there's band camp and stuff like that on it. But, you know, there's lacrosse, there's soccer, there's rec soccer, travel soccer, there's the YMCA is there. And at any given point in the day, there's just about someone there every hour. As an outside organization of lacrosse, speaking for lacrosse, we have to start planning for field usage in October for a spring sport. And it's coordinating with all the other groups to find time that we all have, that we can use the facility. In case today, I was out there, I had 60 kids out there for lacrosse, and I was sharing it with another 60 kids from the YMCA thereabouts on that field. If that field were to shrink in any size or any way possible, if it shrinks at all, that wouldn't be able to happen. And without a doubt, programs would have to be cut. The Y would suffer, lacrosse, soccer, all of them would suffer. So I support the referendum, and if the referendum says, if you choose to reduce the field size, I still support the referendum. But if it was up to me, any option where we can keep the existing field, because at this point, you're looking at, you know, several hundred kids every other day, or just about, you know, I'd say close to 500, 600 kids use it during the week, without a doubt, outside of school. So, you know, it's a community facility, without a doubt. And I think that's an important factor. But like I said, whatever you guys decide, I support the referendum. I think you guys are doing a great job. So that's my two cents worth.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Palmer Yale. I live in, on Woodland Avenue, here in Rutherford. And I've been to a few of the school board meetings over the last few months, and I've heard a lot of talk about the facilities plan. A lot have been focusing on the pool, and the folks who are in favor of keeping it, and I figured I would just put in my two cents about the whole thing. I actually am on the other side of that discussion. I fully support the proposal, as outlined currently on the facilities website. But at the same time, I also, I'm not necessarily anti-pool, I'm just pro-referendum. I have complete faith in the administration of the schools and the board, Mr. Fraser himself here. And I think that they have come up with a really good plan. Now, most of the research that I've done has been based on the websites, talking to people, and it looks good to me. So when I first moved here about five years ago, I'm relatively new. I loved the town. We were renting, we decided to buy. And I remember going down to Lincoln Park and seeing the terrific things that are going on here in Rutherford. And in my first year here, then I ended up at a couple of the schools. Went to Pierpont for a concert, basketball game in Pierpont, I came into the high school for a class, and was pretty much surprised, I won't say shocked, by the facilities. This is, my children were quite small, and I wasn't really thinking about school. And I, at that time, years ago, I was thinking, wow, these, it really needs to be updated. A lot of the things for the different schools. And I'm very, very happy that the board and the administration has taken on this task now. As far as the pool goes, my children went to the, took swim lessons at the pool. We're not doing it, we went crazy about the Y classes, to be honest. And the pool got really cold a bunch of times because the boiler kept breaking. So we're actually taking classes elsewhere now. But, again, I'm not anti-pool, and I think I probably speak for a lot of folks, but I am pro-referendum. And if the pool, if saving the pool adds a cost to the referendum, then the referendum has less chance of passing, right? It's all about money, for the most part. It's really nice to hear that perhaps the general cost is going to be less. So in my mind, the most important thing is getting this referendum passed. If the board decides that the pool's going to stay, I'm all for it. But if they decide that it's going to go, I'm all for it as well. It was really interesting to hear about the robotics class tonight that did so well. It would be a shame to not give them new updated classes, new science classes and everything. And I urge anyone who hasn't done it to go to the, to go to the website, the facilities website, to just look at the, look at the photographs that are posted there of the overcrowded classrooms and gymnasiums and lunchrooms. And, I mean, basically, you can sort of follow somebody through their day, an overcrowded class, and then they have an overcrowded lunch, and then maybe they go to a concert where only 40% of the class can fit in. I guess the point I'm saying is, I've never been a one-issue voter, and I would hope that the folks that want the pool, I understand it, I've listened to you and your arguments, a lot of them make sense. But it's more important that we get this referendum passed and get our schools updated. Last thing, I'll just say real quick, is thank you to the administration and the board for taking this on. I know the can has been kicked down the road for years. This has to happen. If it doesn't happen this year, hopefully, in the very near future, thank you for your work on this. It's a really hard task. I know it adds to your, to your day, and weeks, and months. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Bonnie Quark in 390 Montrose Avenue. Mrs. Blanchard would be upset if I didn't do a shout-out to the choir people. Also went down to Washington. They got a superior. So all in all, Rutherford High is doing amazing with all their events and extracurricular activities. I share the same sentiments of the person that was just before me. It's not about a pool, it's not about a kitchen, it is about gaining classrooms. I have two kids at Rutherford High. It is extremely tight in these buildings. And I'd hate to see kicking the can down the road, and then two years, everybody screaming, "We need space", and we have to rush a projection project and a job, and that's going to cost even more money. If you want to save money, we need to start planning out, it needs to be a long-term. This plan for the referendum is so in three years, there's room for all those big bubbles of kids. I was a little shocked to hear the YMCA last meeting say that they offer the rec summer camp use of the pool. They offer use of the pool, for a price of $100 an hour, for only four days through the whole summer. That is supposedly a town pool, but the town people can't use it. Or if they are using it, they're getting charged. I'm pretty sure, I sent this to Mr. Hurley and Mr. Kelly, I'm pretty sure you guys got the contracts that I had opened. Mr. Kelly's nodding yes. I was shell-shocked, because the kids for the last year, they went and got charged, they were here for four days, an hour, one hour, four days, the whole summer. This included locker time. So they, for the whole hour, they had to get in, change, go in the pool, get back in the lockers, change, and get out of the area. And it was shared. They got charged $460. So we're not getting any free handouts from the Y. As a taxpayer, I'm a little offended that the Y is continuing to use taxpayer pool and making money on it. They're making money with their swim team, they're making money with their lessons. And we need space. We need classrooms. We are getting way too tight. 28 kids in a classroom is crazy. We need space. And that is where we're getting the space. The pool is not used in the schools. We have not had swim lessons in over six years. So it's going to be six years. Katie was the last class, my daughter, she was in fifth grade, she is now going to be a junior in a month. So we need, you know, if everybody wanted swim classes back in the curriculum, where have you been for six years? It's a great thing to have in the curriculum, but it was done away with because the education needed to be brought up for Park and all the testing. No one said boo until now. As for the cafeteria, there was an incident in Lynnhurst, either a year or two years ago, where a carney student walked in, out of, outside, walked into Lynnhurst School, and they had a lockdown because there was a stranger in the school. Have a cafeteria. I ate at a cafeteria. They'll still be able to go do business out on Park Ave. But it's not about a cafeteria and a pool, it's about classrooms. A lot of classrooms are needed. You guys are upset your classroom sizes are 25, 30 kids? Bring more classrooms in, and we will get lower classrooms. My son had a classroom of 20 kids. I think he was one of the last classes, okay? Last classes. So just think about it, people, it's classrooms, it's not about cafeterias and pools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Inshaam Mahmood, 259 Orient Way. May I ask you upfront to get five minutes, like the gentleman before me? Thank you.
I've been lenient.
Thank you. First and foremost, I want to thank each and every one of you. Last time when I was here, when I asked everyone to speak, there was no intention, and there was nothing in my words that indicated questioning any one of you credibility or background or professionalism. The reason I say that, there is a lot of misperception on Facebook, on social media, unfortunately, and some articles written in the paper or letter to the editor, and unfortunately, it's by some of the Board of Education employees. So just for the record, myself, and I don't think anyone here representing Save the Pool works for the YMCA, we don't get paid from the YMCA, and we don't work for the Y. I just wanted to put this upfront. And again, my intention when I asked the board member to speak last time, we just wanted to hear them. And many of them are personal friends. I cherish your friendship. Many of you have taken the time to meet with me personally, speak with me over the phone. I really cherish your friendship. And I really do encourage you to speak again today. I heard what you said about the referendum. There was a letter sent to the Board of Education, Mr. Hurley, Mr. Kelly, we CC'd on it. There was some concern last time about the cost for hiring another architect to have a second set of eyes on our plan. I talked it upon myself. I reached out to an architect firm who's been in business for more than 25 years. They're very much familiar with our school systems. They are the architect for neighboring town. And long story short, after looking at our plans according to them, there is a room for millions and millions of dollars to be saved. Now, I'm talking about the entire plans, I'm not talking only about the high school or the swimming pool. Their fee will be $25,000. If you are interested in knowing the firm, I'll be more than happy to say it. That's one question. My second question, according to our architect, before April 12, I wrote some notes here, but again, I can't read, I forgot my reading glasses. Before April 12, he said that the new cafeteria will be, will be for 400 students. On, or right before April 12, he changed the numbers to be 456 students. On April 18, with option five, or option four, that he came up with it, with the two-story building here, he stated that 3,000 square feet will be required to fit 200 students. I just hadn't liked math, I enjoy math. 3,000 feet to fit 200 students. I measured the pool, the pool is about 5,400 feet. The pool, according to our architect, will only fit 356 students. This is not my calculation, it's according to his own calculation. If you can believe shit, some light on that. Also, according to our architect, in the option four plan, I believe number, item number 14, he stated that the state DOE found out that we do not have any... item number 14, he stated that the state DOE found out that we do not have any unhoused students in the high school. My question is, I'm not sure what that mean. What does it mean to taxpayer? What does it mean to the referendum? Because I've been hearing if the state find out that we don't have unhoused students, the state may go up. So again, my question is, what does it mean when the state DOE find out that we don't have unhoused students in the Rutherford High School? My second question, did the state find out that we don't have unhoused students anywhere else? And again, if you can shed a lot, some light on that and explain what would be the tax impact? Thank you so much.
Yeah, I'll wait to respond because I'll just wag a response to everybody.
Thank you.
Hi. Kevin Dogan, 469 Stuyvesant Avenue. So members of the board, first again, I would like to thank everyone for everything you do week after week, usually when there's nobody here. But you put a lot of time and effort into this, and what you do does make a difference. I do support all of the academic aspects of the facilities plan, including the sports. And we're spending a lot of money on sports. So I think it's contradictory that we want to spend so much money on sports at the same time that we want to take away a great sports facility. But I do support reducing class size, modernizing our science labs, adding, improving the facility so that they're not falling down. It's all critical work that has to get done. But I, I cannot support filling in the pool because I think that is a critical, critical facility that we don't have to, and I think there is another option that we can do instead. The 27, 2017 Strategic Planning Committee findings are cited as the basis for the referendum. But I couldn't find anything in there that talked about needing a kitchen. So 270 parents responded to the survey. None of them said we needed to lose the pool. None of them, as far as I could find, said we need to add a kitchen. So my first question, and I'll ask, and I guess you'll answer at the end. How and when did the, the need for the commission, the kitchen and the food distribution center come about? If it wasn't from the survey, where, where did that need come from? And in the plan, I believe is about $5 million is the cost of what was called a cafeteria conversion, pool conversion to a cafeteria. How much of that $5 million is really not for the cafeteria, but is for the kitchen? There's a kitchen, and there's also the food distribution. It would be nice if we could see that breakout of that cost. Option three was deemed non-viable because of its impact on the field. And I fully agree. We absolutely need the field. We have Tamlin Field, which I think is completely underutilized, and I don't understand for a town why we don't use that more. Maybe somebody knows. Maybe there's some history behind it. But for, for this field here, you know, it's really not desirable to lose any of the field. But I think it's much less desirable to lose all of the pool. It's a balance between the two. So if we had to lose a little bit of the field, a small bit, and I don't want to lose any of it, but to balance. With option three, and I think it was 15 to 20% of the, of the field was going to go for the kitchen, for the food distribution center. And tonight, I think you said 20% just for the kitchen alone. So I'm, I'm very confused about the breakout. So perhaps we could see the drawings, which haven't been put up on the web, but it would be nice if they could be. So we could see the exact dimensions of what, how much is the kitchen? How much is the cafeteria? How much is the distribution center? And, and there's a new service area because we need the kitchen. That, I think, is what's taken up a lot of the space from the field. So if we didn't have the kitchen, and it was just the cafeteria, wouldn't that just fit in the existing driveway that's right here? And I believe if we took all that out of it, just cafeteria only, the cost would actually be less than option two, which would be far less than the new option four. And effectively, you get the same thing. So if you take that option, pull out the kitchen, pull out the distribution, it's the same thing, but it's far, far cheaper to do it that way than the two-story that's right here. The Save a Pool website lists the evidence that shows how this pool was funded, how it was built, how it has always been run as a community center, sorry, as a community pool. Every Rutherford resident is a third-party beneficiary of those agreements. The mayor and the council have been here and have met and have made specific representations on part, on behalf of the residents specifically about the pool. And I, we, I asked at the last meeting if you wanted to share any of that, and I'll ask again if you want to do anything publicly to say what they actually, what the content of those conversations. But along with that, the, um, there, there has been an opening offer from the YMCA. And I've heard a lot of talk about the YMCA. They're, they're bad. They're too expensive. You know, I don't work for the YMCA. I have no tie with the YMCA. My kids are members. They, they, they swim on the swim team, but that's about it. I agree. I wish they could do more, and I wish the existing contract that we have was a better contract. But now I think you have an opportunity, if we were to keep the pool. This is a huge opportunity to do a much better deal with the YMCA. They put a great offer on the table, far better than we've ever had before. But again, because it's tied to a long-term contract, not short-term deals, as has happened for the last 20 years. Use that opportunity to change the deal. Turn that pool into the community pool that it was supposed to be. Um, a, a new deal would truly upgrade the pool facility, offer new and expanded community programs for all of, all the Rutherford residents. Back in 1978, when this pool was founded, Dr. Elters, I think that was his name, and the Board of Education took a courageous step when they voted to save the pool and get it built. You can do that today. You can take, you can use this opportunity to have, to leave a lasting impact that would benefit all the residents of Rutherford. And isn't that really why you're on the board? Isn't that why you ran, to be able to make a difference? And I think that would be a huge difference to convert that pool into the true community pool that it can be. Um, I believe it's as necessary today as it was when it was first built, and it's as vital as any field or any classroom. You've heard, which, you've heard feedback from many sources. Um, I think if you could fully and transparently explore every option, you can meet those needs that everybody has asked for. And lastly, I, I just want to say that at the April 12th meeting, the superintendent spoke very eloquently and from his heart about why he was recommending option two. And it's purely, at the end of the day, it's for, for the schools. Your job is, is to work on the schools. But for me, and for all of the members here, for all the members of the board, and for everybody back here, we're also part of the community. So this is not exclusively a school's issue. This is also a community issue. That is a community pool. And I think as we vote, we have to take the bigger picture into account, not just the schools. I think we can do both. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is, uh, Rado. I live on, uh, last in LaRanc, 86 Carmita. I've been to, uh, most of these meetings. I've been listening very carefully, and I just like to share some of my observations. It's been a very interesting and, I guess to our group, quite frustrating set of meetings. Look, I'm involved in finance and investments for top Wall Street my whole life. I have MBA from top schools. I've been listening to, and I listen to business proposals almost on daily basis. And most of them have a very nice story, right? It's important for a lot of people to express all their opinions. But at the end, sadly, I guess, what really matters is, is the financial sense and honesty about the project, right? So from the, just a couple of observations, um, we feel like we, the taxpayers, that actually fund the operations, right? Not some group of individuals, has been stated. We are here making a lot of comments. We making a lot of suggestions. We making a lot of, you know, throwing a lot of ideas, but we don't feel like you're really listening. It really feels like you made a decision a long time ago, and you decided to get rid of the pool. From my, from my perspective, not sure why, but that's how it feels, and it's making it very difficult. Uh, in the real-life scenario, when somebody's asking for this much money, I believe, you know, it is probably, after everything's said, down close to $80 million, right? Uh, so if you ask it that much money, you know, you usually present a very detailed business plan, right? And the business plan has, you know, things like cost-benefit analysis. It's got like financial projections, right? What are we getting for this money? Is it really worth it? I know we want a lot. Everybody wants a lot, but is it really worth it? At the end of the day, uh, it feels like you're basing your projections on a minuscule survey that, you know, you didn't even bring up a lot of the questions that you're addressing in that survey. And, you know, you're using the same architect over and over again, which is also questionable in my mind. In addition to the cost that you're proposing, you, included in the plan, you're saying you're going to get rid of the pool, right? And that pool is not non-asset, right? To build something like that today, you probably have to put up 10, maybe even $15 million, right? So I would highly recommend you add that destruction of that asset that you've been giving to stewardship to the cost of the overall project, right? I think that would be a fair comparison for cost-benefit analysis. What are we getting, and what is this really costing? You know, I was also disappointed by getting, you know, not agreeing to get a second, third opinion, you know? Look, for this size of project, you know, there should be 50 opinions. There should be a lot of different studies. This is not, you know, simple expense. Further, what I'm kind of worried about, you stated that you were not able to manage to bring our children to swim lessons, you know? So it, it brings the questionability to run a project of this size and, you know, with a team that's not able to bring the Rutherford kids to use their own Rutherford pool? You know, that's frustrating to me. The other thing that's interesting that, you know, you gave, you know, the town gave you the stewardship of the, of this asset, right? And you handed it over for various reasons to be managed by YMCA. And now you're using the fact that YMCA is managing it as a reason to get rid of it because, I don't know, YMCA's profiting, or I don't know what other reasons. But that just makes no sense to me. So you shouldn't give it to them in the first place. If you felt that you could do better, you know, you should have done better. Anyway, I, I also fail to understand who empowered this board to reject a million-dollar gift from organization to this town. Like flat-out refusing. I can't remember last time I was offered a million dollars, and I just flat-out refused it, right? Without any reasoning. So that was frustrating to watch YMCA representative here trying to make a very generous offer to be flatly dismissed by the board very quickly. Um, not even having a conversation.
Can you please wrap up?
Okay. All right. So I don't get enough time. All right. Anyway, who's asking for kitchen? Not sure. Who's asking for professional, commercial, you know, kitchen? Who's asking the board to serve lunches? Not sure. We have about 117 lunches based on statistics for the whole district of 2,700, 2,600 students. What is, what are we going to save? Is, is it 10 cents a lunch? I'm failing to understand the math here, why we need a professional kitchen, why we need a large cafeteria. And lastly, last point, you know, it's kind of stunning to see people that work for the Board of Ed coming up here and voicing their opinion to get rid of the pool. I mean, you even had a athletic director saying we got to shut the pool. You know, that's stunning to me. Are we having an athletic director that doesn't understand the benefit of swimming? Are we having an athletic director that's not creative enough to use other fields like Tamlin Field and sending our kids to swim in Lynnhurst? You know, that's, that's kind of stunning. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Aaron Kleinbaum, and I live at 62 West Pierpont Avenue. This is my second meeting. I was here last time. And, uh, again, thank the board for your service, uh, for, uh, doing this work in the evening. I know some of you. I've been around town for a long time. I graduated from the high school. My three children, uh, went through the school system. All of them participated in the fourth grade swimming program. I think one of them told me that it was also in the fifth grade, two years. I'm, I'm not sure of that. Uh, my daughter participated on the high school swim team for four years. I'm here in support of the pool, but also I really appreciated tonight hearing from the board, from Mr. Frazier, about the needs of the community that we are here to share with the Board of Education, the facilities throughout town. Uh, the board uses, the schools use, the fields down at Memorial Field, beautiful, beautiful football field, beautiful track, much nicer than when I was in high school. Uh, the baseball fields, uh, the field out here, also the pool. The pool is a community resource. That wasn't something I heard last week. I didn't stay through the entire meeting. But that resource, we already heard, was provided to the Board of Education by the Town Council, and we are all beneficiaries of the existence of that pool. And I, I liked what I heard before about the value of that asset. To replace that asset, we, we couldn't do it. Uh, and I'm here, uh, because I and the community members benefit from that pool and want to follow through on what the town stipulated when they gave you almost $500,000 to build that pool. Not only federal money, but town money to build, uh, to build that pool. And I'm here to say that if you disagree with me, and I, I understand there are differences, and you vote for a referendum, and by the way, I'm all in favor of improvements to the school. Those of us who are here support the pool, I bet, are all in favor of facility improvements to the school. You'll get more support for the referendum if you include the pool. But if you decide to go ahead with a referendum without the pool, we may decide to ask a judge what he thinks and see what that judge thinks about your timeline to implement, to have that referendum, and to have a bond issue. Because in 1978, the council gave you that money with the stipulation that benefits everybody here, including you, and we can enforce that. So I, I think there's been a false dichotomy here. This isn't, the Board of Education, you're here as representatives of the community. You're not here just to look at the best interests of the students. And all, and you're not here just with the fiduciary responsibility to the students. You're here as community representatives, representing us. You represent the whole public in town. Your fiduciary responsibility is to the whole community. And I ask you to consider that when you vote on June 25th. And I look forward to this June 4th meeting. I was never asked before to come to a meeting to share thoughts with the board on an informal basis, so I look forward to that. And I hope you all consider this seriously, uh, and, and not just, uh, not just for the school, but the best interest of the community, so we can all share the resource, the valuable resources here in Rutherford. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Ranuka, and I live at 34 Hawthorne Street. Um, my kids have just started going to school. My oldest is in first grade, and I really want to thank the board for the amazing education you all provide. But I'm not here to talk about the finance of the referendum, the real estate value. I'm actually here in the capacity of the health and mental issues of the future of our community. I've been a sports therapist all my life, and I treat people in pain. And I just want to make sure that we don't take away movement while we're building walls. The European schools break down walls, so people have, the kids have more space to move. So I would like, while our kids need more space to, and more classrooms, I also feel that they need space to move because in my line of work, I see far too many kids these days with spinal problems, scoliosis, and mental health and obesity issues. And I feel that while we construct the classrooms, redesign the space, we need to think about how much movement helps the future brain and growth development of our future community of these kids while they hit teenage life or way before that in the early ages. So if we have space for them to move outside, then the, their brain development, their limbic system, their stress and anxiety levels will be lower. If, because we live in a, in a city in the Northeast where there's snow, the pool can also serve as a constant 12 months a year weight to create movement for them. Whether it's in terms of doing simple aerobics or just the idea of moving in that environment and swimming being a symmetrical sport, it just allows for proper muscle balance and things like that. And finally, we have the pride of Rutherford with our Bulldog teams and all the various sports we play. And I feel that if an athlete gets injured, it's a really nice way to rehab them through using the water where they won't be stressing their joints. So I would just like, that's why I'm here today, to just talk about health and mental growth of the kids, why growth of the kids while you all fill what is necessary for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tracy Lee. I live at 270 Santiago Avenue. Good evening, board members, Mr. Hurley, Mr. Kelly, and the Rutherford community. My family and I moved to Rutherford over two years ago, looking for a better commute to New York City for my husband, but most importantly, an excellent school district. We feel that we found that here in Rutherford. We have two children, one at Washington School and another that will be at the kindergarten center this coming school year. I have been working in education for almost 17 years and spent many of those years as a kindergarten teacher. I have had firsthand experience of overcrowded classrooms and have had my fair share of bathroom aids. This proposed referendum will help our kindergarten center meet the state standards and give our students a good foundation as they begin their educational years. Mr. Hurley has been completely transparent through this whole process and continues to share and update information as it comes in. He has consistently told us that he wants the very best for our school district and shouldn't we want the same. So I work for a very large school district in Passaic County and this past school year, I coordinated a visit to Washington School to observe Rutherford's excellent world language program for the elementary level. Tomorrow, our technology department and middle school administrators will be visiting Rutherford once again to take a look at something that is unique and not many school districts have. No, we are not visiting the pool. We will be visiting Union Schools Z-Space Lab. This is what we want Rutherford to be, a model school district for our students and for other school districts to look up to. Rutherford Schools has a progressive curriculum and is being led by excellent administration, teachers, and staff. We need our learning environments to mirror this. I ask the public, please don't focus on just one aspect of the proposed referendum. Look at it as a whole and how it will benefit not only our children, but the future of our families and community.
Thank you.
Good evening, Philip Townsend, 323 Orient Way. Let me be short here. I'm not from Rutherford. I moved here about 2000, married a Jersey girl, I'm kind of stuck now. But she grew up in Rutherford and she loves the schools, also since the fact that we came back to Rutherford to raise our family here. I grew up down south and the school that I had, had a pool and it had a cafeteria and it was also about four times the same size of this school and there was five other schools in the school district. When I applied for colleges, however, they didn't ask me, could I swim? They didn't ask me what my PE curriculum looked like. They asked me what language I spoke, what was my GPA, and what am I going to do with this degree that I get from either state or private college? So as Tracy just spoke, it's great to have that pool as a talking point within the district itself, but to focus on one thing as a yea or nay of the referendum might be short sighted and I hope that we can have to look past that.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Leslie Azia, 194 West Passaic. I spoke at the last meeting and there were some additional points that I wanted to raise in favor of keeping the pool, which I've spoken very passionately about, means a lot to me. And there were some other instances throughout the community where the pool has meant a lot and that you might not be aware. I've been swimming where I saw your current swim coach, before he was a swim coach, come at the before-school teacher swim. There were several teachers that used to come, I think around 7:00, 7:30 and swim before school. I've also seen your football coach bring his little daughter to the parent and baby swim. Just as we've, you've heard a lot of stories about parents whose kids have come through the baby swim, the swim lessons, sometimes you may feel that it's a narrow slice of the population swimming, just like, you know, your president said last week, he didn't, at the last meeting, he didn't want to be seen in swim trunks. A lot of people don't swim, but there are a very dedicated group that do, just like there are, you know, a lot of athletic teams in the school that have, you know, dedicated groups. So I wanted to bring your attention to that. I've also seen an amputee come for one of the aquacize classes. So you get a mix of people, just like people have talked about, that swimming is a very healthy sport and it allows people with disabilities, it allows your seniors, who as I said at the last meeting, don't want to drive across 17. They want to come at the 8 o'clock program and swim locally. They want to come in town and not have to drive the distance. I also want to point out that the Lynnhurst Swim Program is not robust. It's very limited. I know people who have tried it and didn't stick with it and came back to the Rutherford program. It doesn't, I used to swim here before work. The Lynnhurst Pool doesn't open until 10 o'clock. There are seniors who want to come early and swim and there are people who go to work after they swim and you can't do it in the Lynnhurst Program currently. Lynnhurst does not sponsor swimming every night, Monday through Friday. It's closed Friday nights, which is a shame, just like our pool used to be opened Monday through Friday nights and have a robust program on the weekends and Lynnhurst does not. So I'd like you to factor in all those other elements in your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Ignace Kuchazek. I've lived in Rutherford since 1975.
Can you move closer to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Good evening. Is that better? My name is Ignace Kuchazek. I've lived in Rutherford since 1975. My father and his brothers, they lived here in Rutherford since 1952. I remember him saying that one reason he came to Rutherford was for the quality of education. I'm a class of 1983 graduate. Mr. Hurley was my English teacher, junior, and since then, you know, the Rutherford Board of Ed and the Rutherford school system has done an excellent job. For myself, when I graduated high school, or as I graduated, I was accepted to every college I applied to. So you guys and your predecessors have been doing a great job. When I went to college, I went to MIT, they actually had a swimming requirement because one of their alumni drowned and then that was a big donor to the school. You had to be able to swim a few laps of the pool to graduate. So some of my classmates struggled with that. I know one person who didn't bother to graduate, but they're a multimillionaire now, so they didn't need it. But, you know, so I passed the swim test pretty easy. I think, I remember, I swam a few of the laps completely underwater. So I learned to swim here at this pool. It was an excellent program. Mr. Panzano was our instructor. I don't think I would have learned to swim without this pool. It's centrally located, it's very convenient for residents and people and students. There are other fields in the town. There's Memorial Field, there's Tamlin Field, there are several other fields, but there is only one pool. I just want to wrap up. So I have two more items, use and cost. So I understand there's a, there's a, there's a use question with the YMCA. It seems to me that that's more something to be renegotiated with the YMCA so that Rutherford High School students get more use of it rather than destroy the pool. The cost of building a new pool at a later time would be exorbitant. So, you know, keep in mind that your decision is, for this pool would be, would probably be a permanent decision. Then as far as cost, so the whole package being over 40 million, I'm a Rutherford taxpayer, I live on Addison Avenue, I'm already paying 14 and a half thousand dollars. So 40 million, that sounds to me like at least a thousand dollars per household in Rutherford, which, that's a lot of money. So I just ask you to consider possibly, you know, possibly you can find a more imaginative solution than tearing down the pool. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
Hi, my name's Mike Jamali, I live at 15 Myrtle Street. I didn't sit there the whole time just to have the last word. I really didn't have anything prepared tonight. I just want to thank you guys again. I mean, I love this town. My kids are getting a great education. My kids are 13, actually no, she's, she's growing very fast. She's only 12, she's 13 in August, and my son is 11, and he turned 11 just the other day. And that's just, I want to tell you about my son, Mike. So when he was six months old, we brought him to the doctor and he had bruises on his, like finger bruises, it was right around Christmas time and couldn't figure out what it was. So the doctor, she was, she's awesome. She's an awesome doctor, but at the time, we're like, you're crazy, like it's just some bruises, we're not sure what's going on, sent him for testing. It turns out he has something called severe hemophilia A, so he bleeds. He doesn't have the ability to make clots on his own. So what that meant for him was three times a week, we give him factor intravenously to make sure that he can form a clot, right? So you're not worried about him cutting himself, you're not worried, what you're worried about are head injuries, knee injuries, things like that. So he grew up, you know, a couple bruises here and there, but we were on top of it. We learned how to infuse him, he's got a port in his chest, we take care of it. Thank God, my wife was just here, she's picking him up now. She's a nurse, so I got really lucky on that, on that front. But what it came down to was like, you know, we put him in kiddie soccer, that was cool. Not much worries about this high, if he falls down, it's not a big deal. But as he progressed, the doctor's like, all right, soccer's got to stop. He can't do the baseball, he can't do, you know, he wants to do karate. I'm on the fence about karate. I took karate as a kid. Maybe it was really controlled. The thing is, the most, the best thing for him is swimming. I mean, there's actually the only kids with hemophilia or adults with hemophilia that have actually made something of themselves in professional sports, or not professional sports, but like in college level and above is swimming, so, and golf. And he's, he's a horrible golfer, but, you know. You know, so that's, that's, I presented you a lot of facts over the last meetings and stuff. This is just my personal story. I'm saving it for him, I'm saving it for my daughter. You know, they want to swim in high school, they want to swim here, they want to swim in town, they want to walk down the, down the street with their friends, the mallets, and stay in this pool. So, you know, from my heart, I know it's a hard decision, I'm behind the referendum, I really am. I just hope that any comments that we've all made has been taken seriously and, you know, without any malice because we're all in this together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional speakers? Okay. With that, we'll, we'll close the meeting to the speakers.
You know, I don't want to, first of all, I appreciate hour and 15 minutes worth of comments and that was really what we've been asking for, dialogue from different perspectives and different points of view. And we've been getting it through some emails, we've been getting it through some board meetings and some community meetings, but I think we've gotten more and more different voices, different points of view over the last couple of weeks. Our website that we launched a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month ago, in the last week alone, has more than doubled the number of people who have viewed it. We're now up to nearly 1,000 viewers from a slow start of a few hundred. And so those are 1,000 people and that's, that's not return, because there's account for return people, those are initial people. So there's 1,000 people who have looked at the website. I'm sure there's a lot of people, unfortunately, probably a lot more people to, as my point about Facebook, probably a lot more people viewing Facebook, there's, which I don't. So anything that's said, good, bad, or in between, I don't know, because I don't go on it. The, I'm sure the website that some of the citizens have started about the pool have a lot of people viewing it. So the point is, there's a lot of information out there and I think people are really starting to pay attention to it. What I don't want to do after an hour and 10 minutes is try to go through all notes and get into a debate, because it's not about a debate or a point to point, it's about hearing what you're thinking and what you're feeling. But I do want to just respond to a couple of things, just that I thought about. When Dr. Alati spoke, when Mr. Frazier was here, I was going to interject something, but I chose not to. This is why I'm usually not polite, I guess, I was polite and then I have to answer it now. There was some confusion in the comments that he, that he made. The two point, if we were to build on to the 20% of the backfield, 15, 20% of the backfield, that would be a single-story building that would go out there and that would be about a $2.5 million increase. That was the, whatever, I forget the numbers, number two, number three, whatever it was, right? If we were to build a double-story building, that would be a $6 million because, it would be more expensive because of the two stories, the amount of steel and the reinforcement, and that would infringe very little on the backfield. The concept of a kitchen, if a kitchen were to be added on, that would have to go back on to the field, but not at the extent of the 15 to 20%, okay? So there are some drawings on the website, but that's just the two points of view. The problem, of course, or the challenge with both is they add the money to the total package, okay? As far as kitchen and, again, I want to go back to, a couple of people said, this is not about the pool, I, you know, I'm sorry, anybody may think that it's about the pool. I know it's, a pool's being impacted by the plant. I don't know why anyone would think the board, or I, you know, sat around years ago and said, let's find a way to get rid of the pool. But putting that aside, this is about space, right? We need, we, you know, we're talking about the 11 classrooms. I was asked a good question about what would we do with those classrooms at Pierpont? How would that impact class size? We're talking about five classrooms here in this building, if we can build new science labs. Well, we only have this structure and the pool structure that are not taken up by classrooms right now. Any other addition would require additional building. If you, if we build in this facility, classroom, science labs, to create the five additional classes, four labs here creates five upstairs because of the larger, narrow rooms that we have, then we lose a cafeteria. So the intention wasn't, you know, it's true that in the survey, it talked about science labs, overcrowded classrooms, classroom space. So short of building a new facility, the only place we could use for space is here or there, the pool, right? So that's the challenge that the board is faced with. That's the challenge that ultimately the community will be faced with if there's a The question about the unhoused students, the state did not find that, there's no unhoused students. In fact, this is the state Department of Education's report, which tells us that district-wide we have 771 unhoused students, 328 of them reside here in the high school. And that's based on square footage, how many class, how many students you optimally should fit into the square footage of each and every classroom in the building. And anything that you put in over that is considered unhoused student. So if the state standard says 18 students should be in a room and you put 28 in that room, you have 10 unhoused students for that room. The state also says you can't use a cafeteria for homerooms. We put 100-plus students in this cafeteria every morning for homeroom. It also says you're not supposed to use science labs as homerooms. We use those because we don't have enough classrooms. The second category the state has is based on district practice. So we have to send in a report to the state and say, this is how we, we utilize our cafeteria. We utilize our science labs. We put 27 kids in a classroom, you know, make up a number, right? But this is the impact on the education. This is what our kids are doing with state testing and the programs and curriculum. And then the state comes up with a separate category that they call district practice capacity. And based on district practice capacity, we have only 10 unhoused students because the state accepts what we do to fit kids in. And this is all the state Department of Education's website, okay? I believe, and I was looking through all the papers, I tried, you know, I have reams and reams of papers, I tried to bring the ones I think may come up. I believe what was referred to on the option four had to do with if the state sees plans that says we can create that says we can create unhoused students, right, we can create an educationally adequate program without building new construction, then they will not give us the debt relief that we're talking about, that was that comment. Right now, we have unhoused students. Okay, 300 of them by the state, 370 of them in this building. I'm sorry, 328 in this building. I mean, to tell, I mean, I, I'm embarrassed to say, the state actually breaks it down to 328.2. I mean, I'm not sure how they figure out .2 of a kid. But the report was saying, if you can, see, the state doesn't want you to spend more money. Then you have to, they don't want you to spend more money, then you have to. So they're gonna say new construction costs more. So that's what that report means, or how that was interpreted. Yes, this is a can that's been kicked down the road, three different people used that term tonight. In 2013, Dr. Jones convened a meeting of the Board of Education and all the school administrators to talk about two problems, lack of a middle school curriculum and the enrollment crisis that meant kids were not going to fit in Pierpon School two years ago, two years ago, they would not fit. So the discussion was held then, it was talked about, a middle school curriculum committee was found, gave a report to the board, but at that time, the feeling was, where are we going to build a middle school, we can't solve this problem, and the can was kicked down the road. When I became superintendent, one of the first things we did was we took a look at, when I say "we", I mean me, Mr. Kelly, working with the board, we took a look at reconvening the middle school curriculum committee, it was a two-pronged problem, one was our, our curriculum didn't have the richness of electives, the richness of programs, there was no robotics in, in Union School. There weren't any theater or art in, I'm sorry, there was art, but theater and digital literacy and STEM in Pierpon School, those, those electives did not exist. So we had a committee look at that, but then how do we create a middle school? So we looked at modular buildings, we looked at the idea of leasing with the intent to buy modular buildings to put into Union School to create a middle school there, but realized that that would be an expensive fix, that would look like a short-term fix, but would be intended to be a long-term fix if you're following this, right? And would not solve some of the problems that Union School would have with gym space and things of that nature. And would not solve the problems at Pierpon. So we came up with a plan to, how can we create solve two problems, one was a good fix, the middle school that was developed at Union School brought us a very rich elective program. And brought us co-curriculars, brought us all kinds of academic achievement for those kids in terms of preparation for high school, is create a trickle-up effect where the high school now is changing their electives because the kids in the middle school are getting the elective that used to be taught at the high school level. It also solved a Band-Aid on enrollment, because by running the self-contained grades four, five, six in Pierpon, and not the hybrid schedule of rotating, I don't, you know, and this gets if you haven't done a schedule, you know, you don't know it's hard to explain it simply, but as kids rotate, it's, you know, you lose that ability to have 26 bodies that are sitting in one classroom, and that's where they are all day. So if we didn't have to create the reorganization, which was done for curriculum benefits, there would have been a third grade and this year, a fourth grade class that would have been, have to stay behind at Lincoln School. Because there would not have been enough room for them in Pierpon. I'm sorry, a fourth grade and fifth grade class. Okay, that bubble year. Now granted, Pierpon classes are large, but they all fit in the age-appropriate building. But like I said, with enrollment, that's a Band-Aid. That solves, that kicked the can further down the road. But now, with the numbers get to be 29 or 30 that's projected in a couple of years, you know, Pierpon and those old classrooms can't maintain that. So, this is about space, okay? I know if you are advocating for the pool, or you're advocating for the field, or you're advocating for whatever it is you're advocating for, it's about what you're advocating for. And I get that. But it's about space. And then the money it costs to create that space. And the only other point I'll make, I was very pleased, you know, that it's true, we've had, we've had this year, not only Wayne, which I don't think you identified the district, because I just did, so I hope I don't get you in trouble with your boss, they don't watch this on TV anyway. But Wayne has visited Union School for a couple of elective programs, we've had Garfield come in to visit some of our classes, we've had Wallington come and spend the entire day and all of our ability to see how we put out our one-to-one program for computers effectively, because they're doing it over in their district. We, our curriculum is a model, okay? But that Z-Space lab that they're gonna come see tomorrow, which is fabulous, what I'm thinking about is they're gonna see the highest level probably computers that we have in the district in our library. Which can no longer be used as a library in Union School, at least traditional library, because there was no place else to put that lab. And there's no room for a student or teacher to navigate that room, because of every, the computers are up on, used to be research tables, and that's what it's being used for. And the other part of the science program is Union, is across the other side of the library, which is our Makerspace Lab. So when kids come in for a traditional library, they gotta work around the, the STEM lab. So whereas I'm proud they're seeing the rich curriculum, and they're gonna say, "What ingenuity to make this work", we don't really have a middle school library, we don't really have a middle school STEM lab, we have a library that serves as a STEM lab. And with more kids coming, and with more technology coming, and more need coming, that's something that we have to address. So, you know, I just wanted to comment on those things, I don't want to get into a point by point, I took notes and you know, the board takes notes and we continue to address and meet and discuss these things. I, I will, and I'll say one more thing, and you know, someone mentioned, you know, that I spoke from my heart, and I you know, I think, yeah, as I do, because this place you know, yes, I used to was a teacher back, I mean, he's aged better than I've aged, but you know, he looks like he could be my age at this point, and I was his teacher. I've been here forever, okay? So I won't say what I do, the hours I put in, the work I've done on this project, which has been all-consuming for about two, about two years. I will say that these folks here, who are volunteers, who have full-time jobs, some of them higher level and more demands than I face every day, they put in a heck of a lot of time here too, and I don't think it's fair for anybody to think that anybody's not listening, that anybody's not taking this under consideration, that we're not spending countless hours reviewing every reasonable suggestion we get, even if we think how can we really do that, how can we, how can we really put that forward economically? Even if it's something that's so far out there, this, this, these group of people have put in the time, it's my job to put in the time, okay? I'm not and if you think I'm not, that's okay, all right? But I don't want anybody to think that these folks are taking this lightly, they're taking on the responsibility that that other boards in past years decided to use that term of kicking down the can. So I think, regardless of how this comes out, they deserve a lot of credit. And I think the community deserves a lot of credit, because people are paying attention. We are not at the point yet where we're gonna you know, there's, there's a very, very strong, powerful study out of St. Louis University that talks about the, the cost-benefit analysis of, of building improvements to a community in terms of real estate values. You know, that's gonna come, we know, we're not, we're not running a referendum yet, we haven't made a decision yet. So we're not this is fact-finding and fact-sharing, this is not campaigning. So some of the things that people are, you know, are want to hear, and that I think the board wants, we all want to hear and share, will come if and when the board decides to go forward with a referendum. And ultimately, the decision will be the community's. It won't be the board. It won't be mine. So anyway, those are my comments.
Okay, thank you. Do any of the board members have anything that they want to add at this point?
Yeah, I'll, I'll just add one thing in, in response to one of the questions or comments around the extent to which the board members need to think about the community's interests. It's definitely the case that we are, we're voted into these roles by the community to represent the community. But our primary role is to not run the schools, but to ensure that they're well-run. And ensure that our community's tax dollars are spent as efficiently as possible to deliver on that charge. So, a lot of the discussion tonight has focused on specific aspects of the plan. But overall, our responsibility is to ensure that we are putting a proposal forward that represents the feedback that we've heard from the community, represents what we see as the best program for programmatic growth and student achievement growth in the district, and one that, that arrives at those objectives in the most cost-effective way. So, we continue to, to hear all the feedback here tonight, we continue to to get the comments, whether they're through social media or through emails, and we certainly encourage that continued dialogue, as we mentioned earlier. Our next meeting, we will, as board members, share our, our thoughts about what we would propose moving forward with, even though it won't be a formal resolution at the next meeting. So, please, again, continue this discussion, continue the dialogue, take advantage of the opportunities that you have to to voice, to voice your opinion and to engage in the dialogue, as you've been doing, and, and thank you for that.
Okay, so we'll move on to the normal business of the meeting now? Okay, so we'll start with the personnel report, Ms. Ahmed?
Sure. On May 7th, it was a personnel meeting in 6:45 to 7:15 in the office of the superintendent. Myself attended, with Mr. Healy, Mr. McLean, and Mr. Hurley. Matters discussed were the renewal, non-renewal process for certified and non-certified staff was reviewed. Staffing lists for the 2018-19 were reviewed. Approval of non-tenured staff for 2018-19 will be on the May 14th agenda. It is recommended of the District Evaluation Advisory Council to continue using the Danielson Model for teachers. The Marshall Model for administrators and supervisors had been used, but the newly adopted New Jersey Principal Evaluation for Professional Learning Process was unanimously endorsed by the administrators, the supervisors, and the DEAC for adoption for the 2018-19. The evaluation tool had been piloted throughout the state and is endorsed by the State Department of Education. It is based on goal and the standards for school leaders. There will be resolutions on May 14th agenda to approve both evaluation models. Five final discussion with staff for Jump Start, ESY, band, and STEM will be on the agenda for approval in May and June. And that was it, any questions?
Anything to add?
Yeah, just on, again, with, with time, you know, being what it is, just very quickly, on the Jump Start registrations, we're currently at 34 rising kindergarten, kindergartens and 24 first graders. So we're about where we were this time last year, and probably will run the same number of sessions as we had last year. The Summer STEM is up to 33. It's a little different organization, uh, structure this year. It's going to be a two-week instead of a one-week period, so there will be fewer kids to equal, if that makes sense, the same timeframe, right? So we're pretty much on target, and that's why there'll be some folks tonight for approval, there'll be additional staff as more numbers, as we finalize numbers in June for approval, okay? I thought that Ms. Ahmed read the, you know, reported on what was discussed about the evaluation tools, Danielson, we've used for probably five years since the state made the change, has been very effective and well-received. The Marshall for the administrators has not been very well-received, it was very cumbersome, kinda all-over-the-place tool. The state piloted what's on the agenda tonight for approval for two years, gave it, worked out all the kinks, recommending this, we looked at it, it's based on standards, it's based on goals, it's a much more effective tool, so both the DEAC the DAC, the administrators, supervisors, and myself all endorse that for the new tool, now obviously the state endorses it since they've developed it, okay? And I think that's
Okay. Do you want to move your items?
Okay. Personnel has 1 through 23 motions. I'd like to read some, and hopefully, if, with the board's permission, we'll pass them tonight. Number one was a contract renewal, certified staff and non-tenure as listed. Number two, contract renewals for non-certified, non-tenure were listed. Three was Rafiq Saad, resignation of a bus driver, Christine Anderson's number four. Appuwas for a longtime sub in elementary. And that was Lynn Casofia. Another longtime elementary teacher substitute. Six, Jennifer Kessler was hired for a science teacher for district. Seven, Amanda Carly, elementary school at Washington higher. B, Daniel Moore, higher science teacher at the high school. Nine, Abby Rabinowitz, higher for guidance council at Union School. Ten, Cheyenne Richardson, higher for math teacher at Union. Eleven, Megan Ann Doyle, disability lead for child rearing. Twelve, lunch monitor, Libby Palacaris. Thirteen, Jump Star Program lead teacher, self-descriptive. And fourteen, Jump Star Program nurse. Fifteen, Jump Star physical education teacher. Sixteen, Summer STEM experience teacher. Seventeen, substitute teachers. Travel reimbursements was number eighteen. As listed, nineteen is service providers for new teacher orientation. Twenty, Nicole Muller, to accept her resignation as special ed teacher. Twenty-one, elementary co-curricular to eliminate, replace the following elementary co-curricular stipends for the the 2018-19 school year at Pierpon. Twenty-two, part-time bus driver higher, and twenty-three, Mackenzie Dreyer, resignation as a teacher assistant. And that's it.
Just for a point of clarification, we did discuss the evaluation tools at the Personnel Committee, since it involves evaluating personnel. But we've always put the evaluation tool under curriculum and instruction. Hence the wonderful explanation by Ms. Ahmed and followed by me, that we should have saved for about three or four minutes, but you'll remember when we get to it.
All right. Okay, so do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mrs. Ahmed?
Yes.
Dr. Alati?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes, on all, except I abstain on resolution number 18.
On all of 18?
No, just my name.
Thank you. Mr. Mazone?
Yes.
Dr. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mrs. Labrera?
Yes.
Motion's carried, thank you.
Okay, curriculum and instruction, Mrs. Jones?
Thank you, there are eight resolutions under curriculum and instruction for board consideration tonight. Number one, teacher evaluation instrument, the Charlotte Danielson Teamwork for Teaching, 2007 edition. Resolution two, approval of the use of the New Jersey Principal for Professional Learning Process for the Rutherford School District administrators and supervisors for the school year 2018 and 19. Three, approval of the submission of the Comprehensive Equity Plan Annual Statement of Insurance for the school year 2018-19. Resolutions four through seven need affirmation of the superintendent's decision of four HIB investigations. And resolution eight is approval of the following field trips, now totaling 144.
The Comprehensive Equity Plan was developed 2016-17, has, and reviewed and approved by the board, but there's an annual requirement for the board to assert that the plan is still in existence. And that covers, you know, the needs of assessment in terms of equality on the student level, on the, on the staff level, you know, make sure that we are, we have all of our affirmative action in place, all of our hiring practices are in place, as plans are sent to the county every year. So this is just the annual recognition that the plan's still in existence, and I think will be up next year for renewal.
I move resolutions one through eight.
A second?
Second.
Any questions, discussion? Okay.
Mrs. Ahmed?
Yes.
Dr. Alati?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mazone?
Yes.
Dr. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mrs. Labrera?
Yes.
Motion's carried, thank you.
a peer could go over, or a student leader can see the kid over there and go and sit and have a conversation. So, it's a really try to, um, you know, let somebody know they're looking for somebody to talk to or hang out with for the day, or have lunch with, and it's a way to try to get, you know, students, maybe especially kids who are a little shy or a little anxious, out to talk to each other. That's a buddy bench. I'm getting one in my office. And I'm, and I'm gonna, and I'm gonna be sitting in it every day, okay? So, if you're ever in the neighborhood, uh, come on by. Um, and also, the, uh, bike rodeo that we started, uh, through, uh, it started off as a, uh, borough initiative, and now we split, uh, the relatively small costs with them to do this, and, uh, it's, uh, the dates are, um, Lincoln School, I think all of it's gonna be in the morning. I know sometimes they split them morning, afternoon, but I think it's all gonna be morning. Lincoln is May 30th and June 4th, and Washington is June 7th and June 8th. And for those of you who don't remember or don't know, um, folks come in from, um, outside group and they, uh, help kids who know how to ride a bike, uh, in third grade, uh, they help them ride a little better, a little safer, uh, the students who haven't got the training wheels gone yet, they, they work with them to do that. It's, uh, it's a fun morning for the kids to go out and, uh, learn a little bit. The police get involved, um, for, uh, bicycle safety and things like that, so it's a, it's a fun activity. Oh, and the Bulldog Academy, I mean, I think it's remarkable, remember last year we were wondering about will be during, well, you know, we doubled the, um, uh, students coming in, uh, from other communities, expanded beyond, beyond Lynnhurst, um, and we still have people knocking on the door, you know, we had a meeting, I had a meeting with Mr. Guy, who was doing a remarkable job as, uh, as the instructor, and Ms. Hohen, who's the supervisor who oversees the program. Uh, the other day, to talk about what's a realistic, you know, cap for the program, um, because it's not so much even for, um, teaching staff, uh, it's more, uh, for job placement for the students, you know, you don't wanna exhaust all the possibilities, but, um, and we have a large, you know, large in contrast and comparison to the number of students in the program, uh, next year we'll have, uh, one or two of our students, but then beyond that, there'll be more of our students coming up. So, it really has, uh, done a remarkable job in one year in terms of, uh, impact on the larger community, not just here, um, and, you know, and the tuition-paying students, um, we are covering all of our costs, um, associated with staffing for the program, and we are, um, charging a tuition that's about a third of what the other schools charge, which is a comment on, perhaps, unintended, but a comment, on special education tuition charges that schools give to us, because we're providing the same program at about 33% of the cost.
Great.
Excellent.
That's really good.
Okay. Any comments from, any questions from the board?
Do we second that? You moved those items, right?
Oh, I didn't move them yet.
Okay, sorry.
Second.
You guys haven't moved them yet. Why don't you go ahead and move them?
I'll move them. I'd like to move Finance, one through seven.
Excellent.
Second.
Any questions? Great.
Mrs. Ahmed?
Uh, all except number one, uh, check numbers, 021735, 36 and 37, and number six I'd like to abstain.
Are you abstaining on those checks?
Yeah, three checks and number six.
Dr. Alati?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzone?
Yes.
Dr. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mrs. Labrera?
Yes.
Motions carried, thank you.
Okay, moving on to buildings and grounds, Mr. Mazzone?
Yes, so, uh, we've not had a building and grounds meeting since, um, the last board meeting, however, I feel like we talk a lot about facilities these days. Um, there are two resolutions, uh, unfortunately, the buddy bench was not on my list, Greg, but, um, there are two. Uh, the first one, um, is a request for waiver of fees for project or in support of project graduation, specifically for the use of, uh, two of our, uh, Board of Education school buses to provide round-trip transportation, uh, on June 21, returning on June 22 at no charge. Um, the second is the New Jersey Department of Education project approvals, um, and, uh, to accept the terms of the preliminary eligible cost letters, um, that Mr. Racine and Mr. Hurley had spoke of earlier in some detail, um, for all six of our schools. So, uh, I don't know if there's any additional discussion from any board member. Not hearing any, I'd like to put these two resolutions forward.
Second?
Second.
Any further questions, discussion? Okay.
Mrs. Ahmed?
Yes.
Dr. Alati?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzone?
Yes.
Dr. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mrs. Labrera?
Yes.
Motions carried, thank you.
Okay, moving on to buildings and grounds, Mr. Mazzone?
Yes, so, uh, we've not had a building and grounds meeting since, um, the last board meeting, however, I feel like we talk a lot about facilities these days. Um, there are two resolutions, uh, unfortunately, the buddy bench was not on my list, Greg, but, um, there are two. Uh, the first one, um, is a request for waiver of fees for project or in support of project graduation, specifically for the use of, uh, two of our, uh, Board of Education school buses to provide round-trip transportation, uh, on June 21, returning on June 22 at no charge. Um, the second is the New Jersey Department of Education project approvals, um, and, uh, to accept the terms of the preliminary eligible cost letters, um, that Mr. Racine and Mr. Hurley had spoke of earlier in some detail, um, for all six of our schools. So, uh, I don't know if there's any additional discussion from any board member. Not hearing any, I'd like to put these two resolutions forward.
Second?
Second.
Any further questions, discussion? Okay.
Mrs. Ahmed?
Yes.
Dr. Alati?
Yes.
Mr. Healy?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mazzone?
Yes.
Dr. Racine?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mrs. Labrera?
Yes.
Motions carried, thank you.
Okay, moving on to, um, any old business?
I have a, uh, a few, um, booster, the Athletic Booster Club's award dinner for winter and spring, which, um, is a long one, a longer one, is, uh, June 6th, and as always, two board members, if they choose, can attend, uh, but I have to let, um, the athletic department know by the end of this week. I think Mrs. Jones has indicated that she'd be able to attend. If anybody else is interested, you, if you don't wanna let me know tonight, uh, if you could let me know even, uh, tomorrow, uh, but, by Wednesday at the latest, but, uh, Mrs. Jones will be there and I will represent as well, so, there's no need for anyone. I know it's a busy time of year. Also, um, Mrs. Jones will be, uh, filling in for Mr. McLean, I believe, right, at the senior breakfast, is that correct?
Yes.
Say a few welcoming words at the beginning, that's on June 1st. Um, Mr. McLean will be able to, uh, present, uh, diplomas and, uh, speak at the high school graduation on June 21st. I think he's, uh, put the feeler out there for anybody for Union School on June 20th. Again, you could work that out, uh, with him and with me, but just, um, I don't know, with Kevin's traveling and so on, uh, we do need to let them know soon for the program. So, if anybody, uh, wishes to, uh, attend, to hand out diplomas, and also to say a few words, uh, at the junior, June 20th, Union School Ceremony, okay? And again, if you're interested, you can email me and, or Kevin, or both of us, okay?
Okay, and in fairness to the comment, um, uh, that was raised earlier in the meeting, uh, do any board members propose that we add a resolution to go to an additional, um, architect for, um, a further review of the, um, of the architectural plans for the facilities project?
We haven't received a formal, um, proposal from an architect, so it's, it's not a, like, how would we do this without a formal proposal from an architect?
So, we wouldn't be, um, we would not be moving that it be, that such a proposal be accepted, but that we would be moving to initiate another effort, to engage another, another party to, um, to, to review, again, the plans that were developed, um, and reviewed by the, uh, project management firm, um, already in the process. It was, it was brought up and suggested during the public comment, so I want to make sure that the board has a chance to move that if, if someone so desires. Okay? All right, moving on, um, legislative update?
Uh, just before, I have a couple of things that I need to, if you remember, Mr. McLean put me in charge of unpleasant reminders, and so that the superintendent's board evaluation is due, uh, latest next Monday. Uh, the following week, Mr. McLean will rise the superintendent, so that when we have our, uh, executive session on June 4th, we will discuss the complete evaluation, and then, uh, at the end of the month, on June 25th, the superintendent will join us and he will, he will receive this evaluation. That has to be done before June 30th, so that we can, we stay within the statute and do our due diligence on that. That is very important. The other thing I would just like to remind you, if anybody is interested in going to the county meeting, it is on May 31st, and it's at the Holiday Inn, right here on Route 17, uh, and, um, that's, uh, another activity that's good for board members to go, suburban county meeting. And one more thing on that, Mr. Mc, uh, Mr. Healy and I are going down to Mercer County. We're going to the, um, I forget the name of the school, um, Middle Six, I'm sorry. We are going to the Conference Center at Mercer in West Windsor. This is the annual delicate seminary. They do it in the spring and May, and then again in November. And what this is, is, um, school districts put forth a resolution, and if it goes to a committee, uh, New Jersey School Boards, if it makes it to there, the people vote on it. There are two resolutions, the delegates vote on it, excuse me. There are two resolutions that are coming forth on Saturday. Uh, one is from New Jersey School Board, and it has to do with, um, school aid. Uh, the New Jersey School Board Association believes that the school districts should receive state aid based on the school funding formula in current New Jersey statute, without predetermined growth limits and calculated based on the most recent and available student population statistics. There's a lot to that before that, but I'm just reading the summary. That will be discussed. If it's voted on, then there, there, um, will be people from New Jersey School Board that will advocate the, uh, Assembly and the Senate to get, to pass that. And the other one is from, um, Chesterfield Township Board of Education, and this has to do with, um, this has to do with the safety, the, uh, the, uh, this is once the NJA has modified it. I'm only gonna read you at the end because it's long and... The NJA SBA believes that the safety, ensuring the safety of our students requires meaningful and uniform laws governing access to firearms, including stringent background checks throughout the nation, inter-agency collaboration to ensure the effective delivery of mental health services and early intervention strategies, and state and federal financial support for security enhancement for the local school district level. Those are the two resolutions that we voted, that we others, things talked about, but that's basically it. Um, the legislative thing, uh, were, any other additional ones? Your school board, uh, notes is coming out May 8th, it's probably gonna be mailed the next day, too, you can read on the next two things on that.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from Mrs. Jones? Okay, hearing none. We will, uh, move on to, um, again, uh, open to the public. Would anyone here like to speak?
Kevin, 416, okay, 469 Statiston Avenue. Um, just, just a comment, um, I'm disappointed, I think, to hear that you don't, that you think we don't need another review by an independent architect, so I'll just, I'll leave it at that. I think you could allay the fears that a lot of the people who want to save the pool have, and ultimately, if, if that's the decision of the town that we're gonna lose the pool and replace a little cafeteria, so be it. We all live here, we're all gonna live with it, we'll figure it out, and we'll work together. But I think you could pull a lot of the people who today are, who want to save the pool. Some of the concerns they have is that we, there are other options that just haven't been fully explored. Now, you have more information, obviously, than, than has been published, so maybe you believe, it sounds like you believe, and you have the data to say, "We've done it, and we've proven these options that people talk about just won't work." So, two suggestions. One, if you don't want to hire another architect, at least publish the data that you have, show the diagrams, show the measurements, show how much space the cafeteria will take, show much, show how much space that the kitchen will take, and prove, kind of, that, yeah, it's just not possible. We would still end up taking too much of the field. Because from my perspective, I wanna keep the field, but I'm okay if we have to lose a little piece of it. Uh, everybody's got a different line in the sand where they're gonna draw for that. That's my opinion, um, so, two suggestions, take it, hopefully you might consider, and, and there, I think that data, you'll pull some of the people. You won't pull everybody, there's people who are gonna vote no regardless because they wanna keep the pool, but you don't want everybody voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Ishaan Mahmood, 259 Orient Way. I just have to echo Kevin, I was told that when I had to drop the kids, uh, some motion was made to hire an architect, and no one moved on it. I'm very disappointed. We're talking about $25,000,000 to hire an architect that could save us millions of dollars and possibly save the pool. We already decided to go on a special ballot, we're spending between $30,000 to $50,000, but yet, the board doesn't see it's feasible to spend 25 grand, even with a chance to add a second opinion, better architecture plan, I'm not saying better prices, because prices, I guess, we'll figure out when it goes out to bed, better architecture plan. I'm very disappointed that that's not been seen as an option. Um, the other thing, Mr. Healy, I just quoted the architect, option four, item number 14, he states, "New addition area is at risk for debt service aid illegibility since, since the DOE has found we have no unhoused students at the high school." So, if the arch...
Yes, and EO, that's after seeing the plans that were already in their possession when that option was looked at.
So, what I'm saying...
So, it doesn't mean we don't have them now, which is what you seem to imply when you said there were no unhoused. It means that if we were to convert this space into classrooms, the extra room upstairs, and utilize the pool as the plans were drawn up, and use our district practices, we would not have any unhoused students. So, in approving a plan that doesn't provide, we've used this word a lot, educational adequacy, right? So, in improving a plan, whether it be $2.5 million, or $6 million, right, whichever one we came up with, or any other plan that someone came up with, right? That money, the state would say, because you have an alternative, we won't give you the debt relief on that part of, of the plan. So, we're agreeing that that's what he's saying, but we're not saying about the here and now. We're saying about the plans that were submitted, okay?
Uh, another question, please. Uh, has the Y asked to renew the contract? That's one question. Uh, would you please provide clarification on the capacity of the cafeteria? Because I found it odd. I believe I'm good in math, 3,000 square feet, 200 students, 5,400 square feet equal four, equal 360 students, roughly.
Tomorrow, tomorrow morning, I'm gonna email, um, the architect to ask him to clarify the numbers and the, and the students.
I appreciate that.
But keep in mind that that, those plans and those numbers were also approved and reviewed by the state with, with those number of student capacity in there, but I'll ask him for clarification on that, okay?
Yeah, he has to change, okay. Uh, another question, if the referendum doesn't pass, are you planning on spending another 30, 50 grand on a special, uh, special election? And also, what is your plan for the pool if it doesn't pass? Is it pool gonna be ignored? Uh, is it gonna be left to just go worse than it is? Are you gonna spend the money to maintain the pool? I mean, there's always maybe a best 50/50 chance?
I think Ms. Labrera rang the buzzer first on this one like a game show.
So, we aren't at the point of saying definitively what we would do if the, if we do put something to a vote and that vote doesn't pass. But I will say that one of the pieces of feedback that has been consistent and has really been clearly stated as something important to consider is the cost of the entire referendum, right? So all of us understand that we're talking about a significant amount of money. And when we initially started this effort, we were all hoping that the total envelope for the proposal would be lower than it is today. And that's because we want the, if we move forward, we certainly want to move forward with something that is as cost-effective as possible and still provides the educational opportunities that we want to provide. All of that said, I don't have a crystal ball, and I'm not here to speak for the board, but it would be difficult to imagine a scenario where we go to the town with a referendum, the referendum is voted down, and then we turn around and go back with a more expensive referendum. So most likely, what would happen is program elements deleted from the package.
Thank you. One more question, please, and I appreciate your patience. There was a comment made here that our architect would money be conservative on the plan. Would you name one time that it happened in Rutherford that we issued a referendum for a set amount of money and the Board of Education spent less to my knowledge? Last time or the time before, there was a referendum or money allocated to buy buses. We never bought the buses. Usually, and I could be wrong, the opposite is true. A budget for 40 million, 50 million to build that many classes, it never happened, to my knowledge, that you spend less, you usually spend more or either are cut down on the project.
Well, to be clear, we don't have the ability to spend more. So the way that the process works is if something goes to a referendum vote and it's approved, that is the ceiling within which we can work. So to Dr. Racine's comments earlier about why the project management team went to the higher end of the estimate for each of those elements was to avoid that problem. And I know that Mr. Healy can speak to it with more clarity because he was here for the last referendum, but I understand that bids did come back higher and it presented issues because things had to be cut out of the program.
The reason why we have, we had to wait, and I had to lobby every year, every year, every year, until we finally got window air conditioners in the Mortimer Avenue wing in this building, which was my building, right, was because the referendum passed with the intent of, the chiller, the chiller in this building is big enough to do the whole building. But the duckwork for the Mortimer Wing, any of the, anything that wasn't touched, not just Mortimer, Elliott as well, anything that wasn't touched by new construction, all that duckwork came out because the bids came in higher than the approved referendum. The reason why we had the ability to put two classrooms at Lincoln School is because that, those two classrooms came out because of the bids came in higher. So the estimate for referendum, you go as high as the, you think the public will allow based on the estimates, right? You can't go higher.
I understand.
And what we were saying before is, in the unlikely event.
Unlikely.
Maybe we didn't say unlikely. If everything comes in under, then that money, we can't say, oh, let's add something else. We are bound by law to use that 54, whatever it is, 54 million for the items spelled out in that, in that project. You can't divert money to something else, that money goes back to the taxpayer. You're also, you cannot bring more money in.
Understood.
So to, so to a couple of points, no crystal ball, we don't know what bids will be like. It's possible that hypothetically, whatever referendum goes forward, passes, right? And then we have to make some decisions when the bids come in about what we can't do. Okay? And that's probably more likely, quite honestly, we hope it doesn't work that way, than it would be to say we're going to have excess money because costs go up, you know, you're planning costs now for something you're going to have to bid for in seven months, right? And the only thing I would add to this, Labrera, with no crystal ball, if we lose, we, like I said, we've been kicking this can down the road, right? I mean, I stole that line, I didn't say it, I stole it. We're going to have to go back out, and we'll try to go back out, you know, based on statutory limits at the next available date, we can go out. But in the interim, we have to figure out how to reshape it. But I think the two things would be big are the idea of cost. And what I said, the overriding theme of this is not anything other than space.
Understood.
So, to, again, I'm not going to sit here and say, my, I can't speak for the board, I'm not going to say what my recommendation would be because I don't know what the outcome's going to be. I don't know what the data analysis will be if that, if it fails. But I think cost and space will be the overriding concern, you know, maximizing space, minimizing costs.
Space for the school programs.
For school programs.
Which I appreciate and understand that.
And that's an honest answer.
Mr. Kevin said in the last meeting that the board's job is not to look for the community. And before I say what I'm going to say, I'm a soccer coach, so no one here will appreciate the soccer field more than me. But since the Board of Education's job is not to look for the community, and it's for the student, I understand lacrosse is being played here, I understand soccer is being played here. I can tell you if you take 15, 20% of that field, it's not going to affect junior size field, soccer field. Junior size soccer field depends on what age group play there. That being said, why the option of 2.5 million was not presented to the Y instead of the 5.9 million, assuming both options did not have kitchen? Maybe, and again, I'm saying maybe, if we present the Y with 2.5 million option, maybe the board can negotiate with them. But I have to be honest with you, all of us here were really shocked to hear about that $6 million option, and when we read it, when we went through the details, at the very end, the architect says it's not a viable option. Again, why the $2.5 million was not given as an option to the Y instead of the 5.9 million? And that would be my last question.
Thank you, thank you.
Would you please answer?
So, we can all review the last meeting, but my recollection is that the, both the 2.5 and the 5.9 option were presented to Ms. Egan when she was here at the last meeting during the public comment.
And it was also presented a letter that Mr. McLean wrote to Ms. Egan. So they both were presented. And so that, you know, at rest, I mean, opinions, anybody can have their opinions or their thoughts, but the facts were they were both presented, both in writing and verbally here.
And just to, just to remind folks of the response that we got was that the base level of, that Ms. Egan made a commitment for the base level of investment in order to keep the pool in a state of good repair, but was not authorized to commit to either the 2.5 or the 5.9 increment.
Mike Tumali, 15 Myrtle Street. Just one quick comment. I'm just curious, you said you had 1,000 views on the website. Do you have any comment on like the number of unique emails you got in, you know?
I've gotten, based on the website?
Well, just emails to facilities.
I've probably gotten since September when it was put up, anecdotally now, off the top of my head.
Sure.
Probably 35 or 40 emails in the past week I've received, and the board has gotten them all, probably seven or eight. They are three, under three, there's a lot of repeat writers that I get. They're based primarily on three topics. One is, you know, I support the referendum, I support the plans as they are. Then there's others that say, I support it, but I'd like to see the pool say. And then there's others who don't really speak about the referendum and maybe speak just about the pool or just about taxes.
Okay.
Most of the emails have been either in support or support with caveat. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else? Okay. So our next item is to, I believe we have need for executive session?
One student issue.
Okay, can we have a motion to move into executive session for one student matter that will be discussed? No action will be taken? Five minutes.